To reply to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vogel?
Here.
Mr. Chaplin?
Here.
Mr. Farnella?
Here.
Mr. Giacomo?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Penner?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mr. Castillo?
Mr. Panisi?
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the Sun-Channel Act, the notice of this meeting is posted in all school buildings, the administration building, rural clerk's office, public library, three newspapers to tap into on January 8th, 2024. Please be advised that if no smoking on school grounds, inside or outside at any time, please silence all electronic devices pursuant to District Policy Number 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes' duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic.
Thank you. Moving on to some attendance report.
I'm going to do the poll on the podium. A little bit different, but I'm going to present from over here. This evening?
Yeah.
Good? Okay, there we go. This evening, we have several wonderful presentations. It's a great night for the South Plainfield School District and a great night to be a student in our district. Our first presentation is for an amazing student athlete in our high school, Eva Altamorano. She is a junior, taking college prep courses, and who has been on the honor roll for the past three years. With all that, Eva still found the time to dedicate herself to the South Plainfield Wrestling Program. Eva began her journey in the fifth grade. Eva and her friend Jade decided to quit karate. They both decided to join wrestling, and the fire was ignited. Over the years, Eva continued in the program, and in 2022, Eva joined out-of-high-school wrestling program. Wrestling at the 132-pound weight class, Eva was GMC runner-up, North Regional Two runner-up, and she placed sixth in the NJSIAA State Tournament. Great showing for her first year in high school. In 2023, Eva wrestled at the 132-126-pound weight class and took the GMC Championship and was the North Region Two runner-up. This year, Eva continued her winning streak, wrestling at 126, and she was the GMC North Region Champion and the 126-weight class champion in the NJSIAA State Championship. Is the first-ever female state champion in South Plainfield's wrestling history. What an amazing accomplishment for Eva, for her family, and for all of us here in the South Plainfield family. The Board of Education would like to present Eva with a plaque commemorating her wonderful accomplishments. I'm going to ask Eva to step forward. I'm going to ask Gio to come on up. Yeah, Eva! Eva, this plaque is presented to you for the 2023-2024 NJSIAA Wrestling State Championship, Girls 126-Pound Weight Class. First female state champion in school history. Eva Altamorano, South Plainfield High School, South Plainfield, New Jersey. Presented to you by the South Plainfield Board of Education. You are amazing. Now, we have another honor. I'm going to ask Senator Patrick Dinan, please come on up to the podium.
I've got a question. Why is Cecilberg saying bigger than everybody else? First of all, you know, it's rare that you can actually see a word defined in front of you. That is the definition of love and pride. When you were called up, your mom and dad literally burst at the seams, and then your whole family is here. And I'm sure you would agree with me, but that is what makes you what you are, to support those that love you the most. And I can tell you, being that in front of you, and I'm sure many of you here know this, when you mention the term or the word "South," or words, "South Plainfield," where you're from, nine out of 10 times, the reaction you get is, "Oh, South Plainfield. By God, a great wrestling program." It goes back to the Dark Ages, Jerome Lamo, when I was in school, before we had lakes, and we just got them with horses and carriages, etc. So you are part of a grand, grand tradition. And I have here for you today, Eva, a resolution unanimously passed by the Senate and the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey, no little thing, and signed by the President and Speaker of the General Assembly. I don't read the whole thing, but I just want to read a little bit, because you deserve it. Whereas the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey are pleased to acknowledge Eva Altamorano-- and doesn't "Alto" mean "high"? So doesn't that say something right there? I knew where you were coming from. An admired resident of the Garden State, who has earned distinction in wrestling and garnered acclaim as a state championship. Whereas she has demonstrated her extraordinary abilities and dedication on the road to the state title, where she clinched a North Region Number Two Tournament Championship. And whereas she has secured a sterling reputation as a tireless worker in the wrestling room, and she joins in this sanctioned rowing sport. And whereas New Jersey's young people, who set their goals high, who preserve in the pursuit of those goals and who reach their desired milestones and meet their objectives, stand as an example of inspiration, it is therefore altogether fitting and right for the members of this legislature to pause in their deliberations to recognize Eva as a young woman of exceptional promise and boundless determination. Now, therefore, this legislature congratulates her and pays tribute to her meritorious achievements. Congratulations. There were two quick ones, and God might have screwed up, but anyway, congratulations. We are proud. We are proud.
Can I just stay-- no, can I just stay for a little bit more? I'm going to ask Eva's coaches to come on up. Mr. Johnston, Mr. Knight, I think they have a few things to say.
She absolutely hates this. Steve Johnston, head wrestling coach at South Plainfield. Just the word "proud" doesn't describe or can't even come close to how I feel about Eva winning the 126-pound state title this year. A lot of you probably don't know, but there was a little bit of time there where we weren't sure if Eva was going to even be able to complete the season. She was dealing with a pretty big issue in her shoulder. And, you know, with the right training and some patience, she was able to go out there and accomplish a goal that, when she stepped in here, day one in September of her freshman year, and then November when she first stepped on the mat, that we all believed she would accomplish. You know, again, we are over the moon with how the season went, and we are excited, very excited, to have her back for one more year, coming to her senior year. And Eva, just super proud of you, and, you know, excited for the future. Thank you.
If Eva's parents would please stand up. We all, in our mind, you know, we raise our family, we think we raise champions. You raised a champion. Great job. I'm going to take a couple minutes, because I know everybody wants a picture. So if we could just stop for a couple minutes so we can do some pictures, okay? This is Gio, the second time presenting to the board. Gio, it's the president of the Class of 2024, a member of the National Honor Society and the Italian Honor Society, the Model UN, and a student athlete playing both for the varsity field hockey and lacrosse team. And her hands are frozen coming in here, because she's just coming from practice.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the South Plainfield Board of Education. My name is Gianna Raffi, and I'll be representing the students at South Plainfield High School. And I would like to thank the Superintendent Dr. Tansin for having me here today. To start, I would like to recognize Eva Altamorano, who won the state championship in Atlantic City. She was also nominated for My Central Jersey Wrestler of the Year, as she is currently sitting at third place. Voting concludes Friday, March 22nd, at noon, so make sure to vote for her. You go to mycentraljersey.com/wrestleroftheyearvote. And next, I would like to recognize the students who were nominated for the Plainfield Rotary Student of the Month. The breakfast was held on Tuesday, February 27th, at the Park Avenue Diner. And Assistant Principal Mrs. Curlew attended with the following students. For December, the Rotary students were Nina De Simone and Chris Ridley. For January, the students were David Rapley and Aidan English. And for February, the students were Sophia Hassan and Nethra Assaram. And now, the Drama Club presents on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the Drama Club's performance of Freaky Friday. The play is being held in the high school auditorium, and actually going on right now is a dress rehearsal for the staff of the school. So please come out and support the students this weekend, as tickets cost $10. Next, I would like to talk about the Model UN trip. The students in the Model UN club will be attending the conference this weekend in Washington, DC, at Washington University. And they leave tomorrow morning and return on Monday afternoon. And now, today is also Band Day for the students, as Band Day is an opportunity for elementary through high school students to collaborate and to play music together. And this idea is to let the younger students know what they will be capable of if they continue playing in the South Plainfield Band. And this is part of Music in Our Schools Month, which began with a district festival that was held on March 7th. And last week in the high school, the NJGPA for testing for juniors was also held. And this testing ran very smoothly altogether, and this week holds makeup testing for any students who missed a day of testing last week. And additionally, spring sports have started up, and there is the annual lacrosse apparel fundraiser, so make sure to support the girls' lacrosse team, as there are posters in the building with a QR code to order. And now, on to spring break. Spring break will start on Friday, March 29th, for the students and the staff, and we will resume school on Monday, April 8th. And additionally, there is going to be an eclipse happening on April 8th when we arrive back at school. And now, on April 11th, the high school counseling department will host the Career Day for students during the day, as different career professionals from the community will speak on behalf of students. And more details will be provided as the date approaches. And additionally, the College Fair will be held that evening from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. And lastly, I wanted to give a recap of the winter sports that just ended. I wanted to recognize the girls' competition cheer team, who placed third overall for states, and the boys' basketball team, who had a good run throughout their season as they ended with a 21-8 record in their overall season and a 12-2 record in the GNC White Division. And to conclude, I wanted to thank everyone for allowing me to be here tonight and speak to all of you about the exciting things that are happening at South Plainfield High School. Thank you.
Gianna, fantastic. Thank you. We have one more presentation this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Whelan to come onto the podium. We will have a presentation this evening on the Storm Dream Challenge. Mr. Whelan is going to introduce the wonderful white, our STEM teacher at the middle school, and our fellow students.
Thank you. We're always excited to come to the Board of Education meetings and show off what our students are doing at the middle school. We invited Ms. White and some of the students from her eighth-grade STEM class to show you a little bit of problem-solving and some real-world experiences that they go through. This is just one of the projects. They do many projects during their semester that they go through the STEM class. So I'm going to ask Ms. White to introduce the students, and they're going to give you a short overview, and then actually ask some of you to come up and try the challenge that they performed inside of the class. Ms. White.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My kids were so excited to show you what they've been doing in class. And I'm going to let them do the rest of the talking, but we want to introduce them. First student is Mariah Hopin, Gianna Fernandez, Kishon, as I said, Colby Stolz, and Georgia Saldana. So I'm going to let them take it away. Thank you again.
We did some really great projects this year in our STEM class. All of our projects that we worked on involve some aspects of science, math, engineering, or technology. It would be great for us to see how these skills could be applied into the real world. One of our favorite projects was the Storm Dream Challenge. For this engineering project, we pretended that we took an Uber to the airport for an international trip. When we arrived at the airport, our Uber driver popped open the trunk to allow us to get our luggage. As we were reaching to get our suitcase, we dropped our backpack, which was not zipped up. Within a split second, the contents of the backpack went down the storm drain. We then thought, "Oh, no, what are we going to do?" We need these items for our trip, and we only have a short time before we board the plane. Our challenge was to design a device out of recyclables found in nearby trash cans at the airport to retrieve our personal items while still making it on time to check in for our flight. We used our knowledge of the engineering design process, which is a series of steps that engineers follow when they solve problems. We researched what storms are used for and looked at some examples. Then we determined what personal items fell in the drain. This led us to think about what was most valuable and important to retrieve before having to board our flight. We examined what material we had to work with and disembarketed it to decide how they could be used to make a prototype of a grabbing device. Next, we built a device and charted it out. Since we only had half an hour before we needed to check in to board the plane, we had to work quickly as we tested the device and made improvements to it.
Here are all the storm drains with the personal items that fell out of the backpack. Cell phone, house and car keys, passport, hand sanitizer, water, wet cash, debit cards, electric cards, as well as earbuds.
Instead of us demonstrating how we solved the problem, we would let a few Board of Education members volunteer to act as an engineer and create a new device to retrieve some of these items.
So we're going to take the things that we would find in a recyclable bin and use it to build something that can be kept out of the trash. You cannot--
It's kind of like a plain operation. It's not exactly an operation, and I need to use these materials? Okay. And I have to get all the objects?
Well, as many as you can. We only have a half-hour.
So what do we have to do?
Forty cans? I'm not that smart. Look at my left condition.
You just can't put your hand--
Did you do that? I can't see my hands.
No.
Are our brains braining right now?
My brain is like going wack.
Think like the most basic things would you use for putting up something?
You come help me.
Sorry, MacGyver, I don't have anyone to talk to.
You're never getting this stuff back.
I'm sorry.
The broom. You threw the broom.
They never get this stuff back. It's like the fall.
They have to exercise resilience.
Just say, if anyone falls, that must think it's your stuff.
Do you mind if you teach me? If you teach one of the-- Oh, science! This is what they have. They're pretty choppy.
Someone to go to some polish to the airport. From now on, this is your fight. Somebody needs to draw on some gum.
I like delegate, because it'll get--
Kimmy got a fork. Oh, you started trying to get under it.
I'm food. What do you check? Oh, I lost my chops.
Flight 472 is boarding. How are they doing? Time is ticking. I'm sorry. You lost everything in your fork. That's it. Sharon's not going on a trip. No pressure, but my students were able to get all of the items out.
Wait, you guys have something. He's close.
You know, you've got to think outside of box now with it.
Outside of the box.
Awesome, Mariah.
Oh, there we go. Did that count?
It can't be handed.
Yeah, I can. Well, now it's a souvenir.
I'd like to add-- Without reaching our hands in the glass.
Just to comment, you just have to--
Can I get it like right there in reach or not?
It has to come all the way out.
It has to come all the way out.
But it would be like you wouldn't be able to put your fingers in that little brace when it got close to the top.
Do you want to touch the swimming water? You could touch it anyway when it touches the glass. You can air dry it. Well, if there's water-- The phones-- No good anymore.
Sunglasses.
Would anybody get anything? Pick it up.
No. What's the time? Thirty minutes. Thirty minutes. Oh, Sharon's got it.
That's why I'm nice. Oh, no!
Can't wait. Who's the fork?
Cheater. Cheater.
Allegro, alia, alia.
Right, the key's sick.
Yeah, we got paper clips. I'm going to lay it on the tape now.
No, no, but the tape helps.
I asked for tape earlier.
Oh, really?
We found these things in a garbage can, allegedly. They don't mean anything. Sunglasses are probably--
There, guys.
You got the keys?
They're my favorite.
Okay, somebody has to deal with the cold damage. We do. We make do.
Well, whoever got it just got an extra piece of somebody's face. Now we have to have a better girl-type sex. Just wait, one more. One more.
Need a piece of this? There's one whole piece.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
We searched a couple more recycling bins.
Now we're cooking. That's a problem. All right. I'm admitting defeat.
You get tape right now.
Well, now I can have-- If anybody wants to take a lot of time in practice tonight-- Yeah, that's what I love. We'll let you do that, but I think you guys want to get back to your meeting. Yeah, we do. All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Good job, everyone. You're stuck in the airport forever.
Hey, now, right? You don't think I was that smart, did you? I can tell.
He got his passport out.
Yeah, you can get him on the flight.
You got the passport?
That's also--
Oh, wait, you can rip it?
It's only you can grab it from the outside, and it's easy out of there.
Oh, you got the tape? We didn't use tape.
That's what I did. That's what I did.
Thank you.
And he got his money too, so now he's buying new bones.
Listen, I killed it in operation as a kid. I'm just telling you that. I had to funny bone down half box home.
Thank you. I hope everybody enjoyed trying that. And to me, it's when we find these great tapes that we do each type of student and really show what we're doing at our school. It's a lot different now than when we were in school, but the kids are cheating what they're doing, what they're learning. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Whelan. And I just want to point out that over the past few years, we've been doing presentations for each of the schools. And this was Mr. Whelan's last presentation as our middle school principal. Did anybody get anything, Emily? Yes, we gave some glasses. Great job.
But Doug got your passport.
Oh, you're good. All right.
Because you got tape.
Oh, okay.
You just stick it to the tape.
Great job. Gianna mentioned-- Gianna mentioned about the eclipse that's happening on April 8th. Just so everybody knows, we are providing NASA-approved glasses for all of our students in the district to make sure everybody's going to be okay. If you're buying them at home, it's ISO 12312-2 approved. So that's the one you have to get, and that's what we have, so we're good.
We need the -3.
No, we need the -3. Also, a couple of other things are happening in our district. Want to make sure the public is aware that we are going to have a preschool information session on March 28th at 6:00 p.m. It is a Zoom, so everybody is encouraged to attend. It has a student who's ready to go into preschool. The preschool meeting will be taped, but if you want the opportunity to ask a question directly from me or anybody who's on a meeting with me, you have to attend that meeting. You must go onto our website and log in. You must register to be a part of the meeting. So that is happening again on March 28th at 6:00 p.m., a Zoom meeting. A reminder to our families, some of our families will be receiving phone calls from our guidance department. Please review your outstanding lunch balances. If you need help to complete a free breakfast-lunch application, please let the district know, and we will be more than happy to help you. With another topic that I'd like to talk about and inform the public, it's in regards to transportation and our budget overall. Many of the members of the public are aware that our school district lost $3.5 million in state funding for the upcoming 2024-2025 school year. That means that once the governor announced the budget numbers last month, the administration and the board members needed to review all existing accounts and reallocate funding, remove projects in order to present a balanced budget or delay other projects. The task was not easy, as the cost to run the district continues to rise so that we can provide our students with the best possible education and facilities conducive to an effective learning environment. As a result, many projects slated for the 2024-2025 school year have either been postponed or scaled down to a fiscally manageable level. The Board of Education was adamant to inform the administration that we were to keep the class sizes low and ensure the students were going to feel little impact due to the reduction in state funding. We have generated such a budget for the upcoming school year. There is one change that will affect a small portion of the South Plainfield school-aged students in the district. We currently have enrolled in our school district 3,681 students, in addition to 45 other students that also belong to our district that are currently enrolled in out-of-district schools that we are responsible for their tuition and also transportation, resulting in a total of 3,726 students. Over the years, the student population has grown, and the demand for transportation has increased along with the costs for both the in-district operations for transportation and the out-of-district transportation contracts. Although we had hoped to hold off on enacting the change until 2025 school year, this funding loss has fast-tracked the change and will become effective for September 2024. What I'm saying is, all students in grades pre-K through 8 will only receive transportation if they are over two miles from their home to the school that they are attending, based on the district's transportation tracking system. This change is based on current student enrollment and will affect under 200 students. I realize this will be a hardship for some of our South Plainfield families. However, in addition-- However, the district cannot continue the courtesy busing mileage totals, and will be utilizing the state, uh, regulated total for the grades mentioned. There'll be no changes to grant middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're being honored. Executive session resolved pursuit of a Republican Act that the board meets in closed session at this time to discuss confidential matters pertaining to student matters, personnel, and internal time privilege. Be the further resolved that the knives discussed in closed session shall be made public as soon as the need for constitutionality no longer exists. You have a motion to object?
Second.
Second, on paper.
Uh, Mr. Wayland? We're, we're just working off one agenda this evening. Um, so if, if that's the case, I just wanna, wanna jump in and say, Gianna, great job again tonight. Uh, partly you could do a better job than you did last time. You could have done a better, even better job tonight. So, thank you very much for, uh, for coming out and informing us on what's going on in schools and you did a great job. Thank you.
Yes. I guess, since we're having this format, when we have, uh, students coming here, we probably should have a short period of board member comments just on presentations and those students before we do the exact. So that's what I'm doing now on. But, uh, again, you know, we make it, uh, we make it hard for me. To follow, follow you, but it seems like it, it, it was a great job again, again. And congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, you had the motion, you had the vote ready? Okay, it's already down in the case, so we're gonna go to executive session at this time. I was back to the third minutes. Correct, vote back order. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, agenda addition. We do have one addition that Joe's gonna read in the agenda.
Yeah, this will be added as, uh, ten D after student activities.
Will be D, encourage student activities to residents.
This is for the residency hearing, and it will read, uh, whereas a residency hearing was held this evening in executive session for student number two, zero, two, two, zero, E, three, two, which the parent guardian did not attend, swaying a prize of her right to use so. And whereas, based on the results of the hearing, the court finds that the student is not on the side of South Plainfield and is not entitled to attend school in the district, be resolved the board hereby disenroll student two, zero, two, two, zero, E, three, two, and assess the situation for the student's period of inalienable attendance, and direct the superintendent to notify the family of the decision and their appeal rate. That'll be, uh, D.
Okay.
Uh, no, just if it's, you don't have to do a motion to add it, it's just added.
Okay.
All right, very good. Is there any other additions or additions? Seeing none, public comments on the agenda of the assembly?
Yeah.
Okay. No comments. Can I have a motion to approve prior board minutes?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. That's real, Paul.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrinell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg abstain? Ms. Penisi?
Yes. Can I have a motion on curriculum A through D?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Vote call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Ms. Penisi?
Yes. Moving on, policy, A and D.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Vote call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis? Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Ms. Penisi?
Yes. Personnel? Can I have a motion for A through D?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Vote call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Abstain on D, one, zero, one, that is my spouse.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loick?
Yeah.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Ms. Penisi?
Yes. And can I have a big motion on finance, eight through C?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Vote call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrinell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Public comments on the agenda? Okay. Nothing, okay. Board member comments? Vote.
Thank you. Um, first, I wanted to commend Alex and Dr. Tansey, the business office and the staff for putting this budget together under the constrictions that we got from our friends in Trenton. Um, and, uh, by having its little impact on the students and the educational opportunities we have. And I just wanted to let you know that it's appreciated the work you've put in, and hopefully some of it will come back, but, um, you did a good job on that. Also, I attended the district music festival, and even though I haven't been to all fifty-five of them, I was the first one. And it was great to see all the, uh, student performers and the good crowd and, uh, the way it was organized with the people coming in and out. It was, it was a fabulous night, and just to see the size of the orchestras up there, it was just amazing. And, um, keeping with the arts, Freaky Fridays being done by the high school this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, kids have put in a lot of time on it, and, um, they're having a good time, and they've worked really hard, so I invite everybody to come see that. As the superintendent's representative on the library board, I just wanted to, uh, announce that due to a result of a survey that they did for the, um, strategic plan for the next few years, one of the things that the community wanted was extended hours, so the South Plainfield library now has, um, more extended hours during the week, a full day on Saturday, a half day on Sunday now. So, um, uh, they do, that's not just for the regular books and stuff, they do a lot of great programs there, so that was due to a response to the community. And, um, congratulations to all the sports achievements, Eva and, um, everybody else, the, the teams, for the great winter sports team they have, and let's do it again this spring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon?
I just wanna commend, uh, Gianna again for her information to us on high school. These kids always do a great job, they really do. And wonderful job by our middle school students, that was really a lot of fun. And congratulations to Eva, um, who won the states, um, what a tremendous accomplishment for her, and we're pretty proud of her achievement. And just congratulations to all the winter sports athletes and the coaches.
I wanted to say, uh, congratulations and welcome to the district, uh, Russell King, uh, as the newest, uh, assistant principal at our high school. Uh, we're, we're lucky to have you. Uh, congratulations to Eva for, for being the first female state champion in school history in Houston. That's incredible, I think about it, we're seeing great, and Coach Johnson was saying that she was injured during the season. So just being able to persevere and come through and come out on top, that's a testament to her coaches and the dedication that she puts in. Uh, great job to Gianna, you know, she left, but always awesome hearing about what's taking place in our schools and high school. Uh, awesome work to our middle school, uh, and, and the engagement tonight and what they're doing over in the middle school. And then good luck to all of our spring athletes. And I know between now and our next meeting, we're going on break, so everyone have this safe holiday break, whatever holiday. You perhaps for just the time off, um, everyone be safe and healthy. Take care.
Uh, I just wanna echo what everybody said, congratulations to, uh, Eva on a tremendous accomplishment. And to the two, to the two, um, to the middle school as well on, uh, their ingenuity, because apparently that was a real life situation, and they actually fished all that stuff out. So that was, that was pretty great, uh, ingenuity on you, on your guys. And congratulations to our new hire and to our promotion? Promotion. Mr. Goman, rats, and.
Mr. King.
King, Mr. King, I'm so sorry, I had to go back and look. Uh, I'm getting old, I don't feel like I use them. And, and Mr. King, congratulations, guys. And, uh, I know you did a great job in your roles, and I would absolutely be remiss to leave somebody out today. So, Mr. Waylands? Thank you for the hard work you do every day in our district.
If you're watching. You're of course not the only one.
Yeah, I know you are. I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
Doug?
I wanted to couple of comments about, uh, a few different things. First of all, I think it's, it's extremely irresponsible of the governor to cut our budget the way that he cut it. You got out, he grandstanding about this tremendous increase in, uh, uh, public funding, nine hundred million dollars or something of that nature, and turn around and cut our district three and a half million dollars. Well, you see some of the other districts getting twenty-five million dollars, fifty million dollars. It's flat out irresponsible. Um, you are causing, uh, harm to the people in our district. We had to tonight make the first step in taking away courtesy busing that we've been fortunate enough to run in our district for as long as we can remember. And because of the decision that he made to cut our funding by three and a half million dollars, we also have to backburner projects that we were doing to make our school district better and all around, you know, just improvement. It was irresponsible. It's, it's, in my opinion, pathetic to cut our budget like that and increase budgets of other schools at astron- astronomical amounts of money. But good job by you guys minimizing the negative impact that we're having, um, but I wish we weren't having a negative impact at all. Um, I want to, uh, try to read my notes. Uh, I wanna congratulate the middle school. Uh, kids did a great job, had me stumped over there. Um, it was, it was a lot of fun to do it. Um, and congratulations to Mr. Wayland on his upcoming retirement. Um, I also want to, uh, congratulate Eva, who's obviously gone, but, um, for, for most importantly, staking that flag into the ground and really making, you know, not only the South Plainfield, uh, wrestling heritage and continuing on, taking it underground for female athletes now to, to accelerate that support, that was, uh, that was tremendous. Uh, the next thing I wanna bring up is a bit of an uncomfortable thing, but I'm gonna bring it up, is the, uh, the lack of the high school PTO. Uh, I wanna thank Mrs. Miller for, uh, helping out a little bit here and looking into it, um, but I think it's absolutely pathetic that the high school PTO has done absolutely nothing over the last three years to help the students out in this school whatsoever. Um, you couldn't reach them, you can't find out who's in charge. Um, it's just, it's, it's a bad situation, and I really think that it needs to be corrected. Whether another group of people out there start a real PTO, uh, that PTO was basically started to make sure that certain people could stay involved and prevent other people from getting involved, and their lack of doing a darn thing for the last three years is really rearing its ugly head right now for the lack of funding that these students have for their events and things that are so very, very important to them. So, um, I, I had to say that, and I had to say it publicly, we've been trying to get things, uh, straightened out with that for months now, months and months and months. Mr. Ross Cola can tell you, I've reached out to him to find out information, and couldn't come up with anything. Finally, Mrs. Miller, I appreciate you, uh, making contact with them and saying that they are gonna do something, but it's hard to believe that the same people who were in charge for the last three years are gonna subtly do something different. Um, and I also wanna go on, and I wanna congratulate Dr. Goman and Mr. King, welcome to the district, happy to have you, and look, you make a great impact on the students in high school. So, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Penisi.
Good job.
Yeah, I wanna echo the, the comments of, of my colleagues on the dais, and, uh, welcome to the district, and, and, uh, you're in a great place, and, and you have, uh, you'll make a big difference here. And, and we appreciate you coming to South Plainfield. I, I hear this information about our, our groups, our parent groups, I hope that there is something that, um, if it, it's really not a board issue in the sense that, that, um, you know, we, we, we don't run the, the PTOs and, and the boosters and all the, but to the extent we're back together here with COVID, all kind of on, on the back end, if there is something that can be done, that the board can assist to help our parents, we thank all of you for your work, and, um, we certainly would like to, in any way we can, to offer support so that whatever concerns or, or, uh, changes have occurred, and things are different, um, after COVID with our, our, um, schools and, and our parents' supports, um, if there are things that we can do to assist and support our parents so that we can make things even better than they were pre-COVID, we'd like to do that. And thank you for bringing that up.
I've got your turn.
Go ahead, whoever should tell us.
Only you're fucking Jimmy.
My three minutes aren't up yet.
Okay.
You let Jimmy go, then you follow him.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, we had a similar issue in our middle school PTO, and it took a group of parents stepping up, and I think actually creating a new PTO and just stepping in and taking over. I, I'm not sure how they're doing in the middle school, I haven't had a student there for a while, but I'm certainly sure it's better than it was, you know? I would assume you'd have to do something similar in the high school.
I just wanted to take a moment, and I, I realized that people have already welcomed, but I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Goman on his, uh, new position as director of elementary education. We know you're going to do an, uh, an absolutely amazing job, and we're so happy that, that you're, uh, taking the position. And welcome, Mr. King, um, with all of your experience and knowledge that you're bringing to the high school. I know you're gonna be an amazing asset up there, so I wanted to just congratulate you, both, and, uh, welcoming Mr. King to the district.
Do you have a board member comments? Welcome, Mr. King and Dr. Goman, congratulations. I think I'm in your central office. But, no, but congratulations to both of you, we look forward to, to work in the future here. And, uh, as everybody else said, you know, Eva and, uh, Royce Eva, what she did was amazing. And, uh, of course, our student rep is amazing all the time. And, uh, middle school and, uh, Mrs. White and her STEM class, great job. You know, it was, it was nice, and like I said, next time, we'll have a little more member comments while the kids are usually in here. And, uh, I had to go to execs, so we'll try to make that change or make a note of that. So, everybody have a healthy, uh, vacation. You don't have to speak after me. Okay, sorry. It's unbelievable. On that note, can I have, can I have a motion?
So move.
Motion. Second, all favor?
Aye.
Move. Oh, my gosh.